I heard someone's a big job. I know, I remember him coming down north every other weekend.
Now that motivation will wait for you.
Hi Florida. What did you do with that video? Did you shoot the video on Bear Lake?
Did they do what?
What did you do with the video for the Bear Lake? Oh, it is?
They're zipping.
No, no, no. The, uh, with the sound being on?
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh, mine's happy yet.
Oh, okay.
Fun lights. Takes them a while.
Everybody ready? Manistee City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 18th, 2017, 7:00 PM is now called to order. Councilmember Goodspeed will lead us into pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. You please take roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Beeden?
Here.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Planning and zoning director?
Here.
Public safety director?
Here.
And city engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related item. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak to items that are listed on the agenda. I'd ask that you come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comment to five minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Lynda Kamashchek. I live at 345 Fourth Avenue. I'm the secretary of the teen center board, and my question is about this Sands Park Control Board. Is it going to be limited to two people from the city and two people from the school, or is a city resident going to have an opportunity to sit on that board?
The agreement calls for two representatives from the school and two representatives from the city.
Okay. And that agreement was from when, 1951? Can it be modified at all?
I haven't even looked at that.
Okay. So after you look at it, then I'll come back and ask again.
You agree?
Okay. Just wondering.
Is there just a comment?
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Tyler Lupinen. I'm the DDA director. I'm here to request your support for the three events and road closures before you tonight. The first one is for Midwest Gas and Brass, which is a regional vintage car touring group. They contacted me earlier this year and wanted to be able to park in a public spot for people to view their vehicles. The group is not able to provide insurance that meets our city's requirements, so the DDA is covering the group on hours to allow them to park on the street and give the residents a chance to view these unique cars. The other events on the agenda are new events for the DDA called TGIF Manistee. The events are modeled after similar events in Ludington and Traverse City. They are family-friendly events with free games and activities, live music, and all sorts of vendors. On August 11th, we are proposing to close from Division to Green Bush, and then again from Pine to Spruce Street. This was a compromise with the sidewalk sales, and we thought it would be best to have two ends of River Street closed instead of one section to try and encourage people to walk back and forth through River Street. And on August 18th, we are proposing to close the street from Division to Maple and again from Maple to Oak. Both these events are from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Since I've been here, I've been receiving a significant amount of public pressure to hold more events, and specifically family-friendly events, not focused on alcohol. Additionally, the Chamber held their Imagine Manistee event with over 100 people participating in closing the streets and special events ranked second and third, not far behind live music venues. I went to probably 95% of the businesses downtown and asked their opinion for holding this type of event. Only two businesses were opposed. One of them was opposed because they didn't feel like we had enough time to plan. I had two businesses that were upset that their blocks were not being closed. The lack of time to plan was not lost on me, and with such little time to move on this event, we started getting commitments from vendors and advertising. I created one Facebook event. So far, the post has reached 7,800 people, meaning it showed up in their newsfeed. 1,300 people have viewed the event, meaning they actually clicked on it, and 218 people have indicated they want to go. In four days, this event has been up, and has the third-best reach, the second-most viewed, and second-most responses from all our Facebook events ever, which typically run for 30 days and are paid. Additionally, we have commitments from over 25 vendors, including the Farmer's Market, the Vogue, the Ramsdale Theater, the Chamber, West Shore Bank, Manistee Recreation Association, and other businesses and vendors to provide free entertainment, and two bands to provide live music. We have interest from 20 more, but they are not committed yet, and another 20 that we plan to reach out to. My point with all this information is it seems to me that there's a significant interest from the community for this event. The Chamber has also provided a letter of support. There are several goals that we hope to accomplish with these events, to give local families an opportunity to enjoy downtown, to draw in more visitors, to increase sales for businesses, to generate activity, and to build community. We understand the importance of working with and compromising with other organizations that have events going on that day, and in the future, the DDA will try to get all these events that involve street closures to city council at the beginning of the year to allow for more planning. Again, this is a new event, and with any new event, we'll encounter issues and we'll work to do better, to collaborate better, and to make the event a win-win for everybody involved. Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Del Napp, and I live at 359 Forest Street, Manistee, Michigan, and I own the Fillmore, the new business, with the last year downtown. I'm going to keep it pretty brief because I can't follow up that, but as far as, I'm commenting about the closure of the downtown as well, and I've talked to several people. I've had some pushback positive, I've had some pushback negative, but I guess I just wanted to kind of bring it up, the fact that, you know, we're trying to, continuity in community is what we're trying to create, and not every single activity that happens downtown is a plus for my business on that day. It may not be a plus for every single business on that particular day, but what we're trying to do is build community, and in the long run, I think it'll benefit the whole downtown as a whole, and I think that's what we're trying to do, is build continuity down there and get more people into town, so everybody can be more productive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Last time I went off script, and it wasn't fun, so.
Name and address.
My name is Patrick Wilson. I live at 281 Fifth Street, District 4. And good evening, everyone. I kind of feel like the people I want to talk to, I have my back to a little bit, so I'm going to talk a little bit here because the mic is stationary. But like I said, I'm, my name is Patrick Wilson. I'm an environmental consultant, and I do work for, like, built dig digging ponds, or if you want some kind of air purification system inside your house, I can do that through aquaponics, that kind of thing. My newest ambition in this town is to take some of the blighted properties, foreclosed properties, or properties that are in not dire straits but need of care, maybe some landscaping and/or just property value for selling the realties. That's what I plan on doing, or I want to do. Some of you know me, so some of you know that I'm a very dedicated person. I know what I'm doing. I'm a very educated person, and I'm a very ambitious person. So as I was looking for houses, there were some incidents, but no, there was nothing bad, nothing that can't be taken care of, but when I'm outside for a blight issue, for a exterior evaluation, where I go to the threshold to look at the foreclosure properties so I can get the case number and everything.
This is for agenda-related items, so you said?
Yes, it would be for your blighted properties, for any kind of blighted property that you have on your agenda for tonight. Road commission and also street commission. Correct?
Applications to boards and commissioners.
Well, here, I'll go this way. Last time I did not make the impact that I wanted, or maybe that's why I'm having such a hard time. Like I said, I want to take some of the blighted properties in this area and make them into homes that can be sold and/or rented out more for the public. I don't plan on keeping that money. I plan on putting that money back into Manistee. I would put that in something like we had back in the day called Blossom Boulevard. I could plant perennials that would come up every year that we would not have to have kids on the side of the road, or we could have volunteers on the side of the road. The biggest issue with the Blossom Boulevard was volunteering, and I can get that taken care of on my part, too. But like I said, I am Patrick Wilson, and that's what I'm doing, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone here and everyone in this town knew who I was and knew what I was doing, and if they had any support, they could let me know, or they could just voice their support. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Are there any other citizen comments? United, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, consideration of zoning amendment Z-17-07, amending Section 514 parking, bike parking, sidewalks, and Section 1832 dueling multiple units. Notification regarding the next work session, consideration of the conservancy of damp bottle dry. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I would like to take notification regarding next work session off because I'd like to add something to it.
Which one?
Work session.
B.
B.
B. Section 4. Notification regarding next work session, I just want to add a topic to it.
Any other items? I'll make the motion as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? City clerk, please take roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yep.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Beeden, that was?
That was Section 4.
Section?
B. Notification of next work session.
Notification regarding?
Tuckey? Yes.
Yeah. It's not, it's not the date, I just want to add a topic.
Okay. New business. Consideration of city appointment to the Sands Parks Control Board. The city of Manistee and Manistee School District entered into an agreement on July 16th, 1951, for the operation of Sands Park. One of the conditions of the agreement was the creation of a control board with two representatives from the city and two representatives from the school district. The control board has control of the operations of Sands Park, consistent with the conditions stipulated in the July 16th, 1951 agreement. At this time, no positions on the control board are filled. The school district intends to fill their positions, and the city manager recommends that the city do the same. At this time, I've checked with the city clerk and the city manager. In the past, historically, these have been mayoral appointments, so I intend to make the appointments to those positions. I would make the city representative appointment to Mr. Jeff McCula, Director of the Department of Public Works.
I'll support that.
Is there any discussion? Would you please take roll?
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. For the city council appointment, I would appoint Councilmember Aaron Pontiac.
I'll also support that motion.
Is there any discussion? Would you please take roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yep.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
And Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a parcel split for Manistee Golf and Country Club 2. A request has been received from the Manistee Golf and Country Club, 500 Cherry Street, for a parcel split to sell surplus land for potential building sites. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at the July 7, 2017, meeting and recommends council endorsement. At this time, council could take action to approve the request from the Manistee Golf and Country Club 2 for a parcel split to sell surplus land for potential building sites as submitted with application PC-2017-10. Before I take a motion on that, I would like to announce that I am an equity member of the Manistee Golf and Country Club Number 2, and would gain financially from this transaction, so I would recommend council exclude me from discussion and vote on this issue.
I'd like to motion to excuse Jim Smith from the discussion and vote.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, second by Councilmember Beeden. Would you please take?
Roger.
Roger.
I did.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes. Well, that brings up something interesting. I really don't think that Mayor Smith needs to recuse himself from this because he's not personally gaining financially from it, it's for the club if it sells. And here's another twist. Lighthouse Realty is representing the sale of the property, so perhaps you could recuse me as well on the same basis.
I mean, Mayor Smith's, though, point was he is an equity member in the country club, and so there is potential financial gain.
An equity member is on the club. I stand to gain financially from this transaction.
I suppose, and I don't know what, and don't want to ask what your reasons are, if you would be compensated personally, but if you were potentially receiving personal compensation from the sale of that, I suppose that, too, could be. Although, to be honest, that's, that's not being approved here, who the realtor is.
No, but I'm bringing it up. I think it's important, I should probably bring it up. I mean, I have a very opportunity and right to take a buyer over there to buy that piece of property.
Would you like me to excuse, to recuse him?
I think the best distance.
I'm not trying to be, I mean, I understand.
If it's, you know, if anybody has a problem with that, please go ahead.
I think that, that, there's some distance between that potential and what the council is being asked to approve today. And what we're dealing with is a section in the charter that requires all council members to vote on every matter that comes before council. The exception being, as the mayor has pointed out, when there is some potential financial gain to a member by the decision that's being made. And so I think that I'm comfortable saying that Mayor Smith, your basis would be justified to have him be recused. I think that your bringing up the issue, it was the important part, but I don't think that recusal of council personnel would be necessary.
You okay with that?
The motion right now is I think the mayor is.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion or comment?
That's just on the motion of recusing him, right?
Oh, no, I don't have any further. I'll add more.
Okay. Please take roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
And Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Great. Now a discussion on the issue, and I will not participate.
I would like to just bring up my feelings on the wording on this particular motion to approve. The Planning Commission approved one split, and this is a little nebulous, I think, as far as the number goes. I'm just wondering if we should be tightening that down to, say, one split, because that's exactly what the Planning Commission did approve. It is, it is one parcel they requested to split into one parcel. The parcel could later be split into two building sites, making the requirements of both departments.
They have to come back?
They would have to come back with that, correct?
Your point was that if it's just one parcel that's being approved for the split, does that?
Yes.
You want the language to reflect that, or?
Yes. Only because, as a realtor, I know how that might be misinterpreted somewhere down the road.
Did we make a motion to even approve this? Okay, that's what I thought. I'd like to make a motion to council take action to approve the request from Manistee Golf and Country Club for the partial split to sell the surface land and potential building sites as submitted in the application PC-2010.
I'll second that.
217-10.
And we have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, and a second by Mayor Potem Zalinski.
I think it would be better if it read for a potential building site instead of building sites, so that it's clear that it's one building site right now.
Does anyone have any problem changing that?
I can amend my, I'd like to amend my motion to say potential building site as submitted with the application of PC-2017-10.
I again will support it.
Do we have an amended motion to change the language from sites to site?
We beat that enough daily.
Any further discussion? Please take roll.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into a five-year agreement with IT Wright for Network and Information Technology Consulting and Support Services. The city uses a contractor of record to provide IT consulting and support services. The agreement with the current contractor, IT Wright, expired June 30, 2017. The city is satisfied with the relationship and has negotiated terms on a new five-year agreement with IT Wright. The city attorney has prepared and approved the agreement. At this time, council could take action to approve a five-year agreement with IT Wright for Network and Information Technology Consulting and Support Services.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Potem Zalinski, and a second by Councilmember Beeden. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Bradford here?
Yes.
Is that the same company that we bought our new software from?
No.
Okay.
They are certified with that software, are they not?
Yeah.
Okay. Will there be any additional cost or any cost savings because they have that certification?
Well, they're very closely aligned with the vendor that sells the software that we bought it from. IT Wright and BSNA work very, very closely together, so there's not really cost savings, but there certainly would be efficiency savings if they had to come in and do some kind of a major system change or system update because they're very familiar with the software.
And we did not take action to release a bid on this extension?
No, I didn't feel there was any need to. We had an extremely competitive price from them last time. There was a modest inflationary increase. The bids that we got last time, they were by far the lowest, and they've been an outstanding vendor for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Would you please take roll?
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a two-year agreement with Huron Tackle Company. The city owns and maintains the fish cleaning station at Douglas Park, First Street Beach. The city has contracted with Huron Tackle in the past to manage and remove fish waste from the facility. The proposed agreement maintains the previous terms and cost. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the agreement. At this time, council could take action to approve a two-year contract with Huron Tackle Company for an annual amount of $6,000.
I make that motion.
I have a motion by Mayor Potem Zalinski, and a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion?
No, just to say that they do an excellent job. In my opinion.
You please take roll.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Downtown Development Authority, Parks Commission, PEG Commission, and the Zoning Boards of Appeal. All appointments by the mayor are subject to council's approval unless otherwise specified by statute or ordinance. Nominations for council appointment do not require a second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council should vote on that nomination. A majority vote in favor of placement of the nominee is required for appointment. The following applications have been received. Downtown Development Authority. Two vacancies, terms ending 6/30/2021. One applicant must be a resident of the downtown district, one must have an interest in property in the downtown district. This is a mayoral appointment. I would nominate Rachel Brooks, 71 Oak Street, to fill this position. She is an incumbent and currently chairs the DDA board.
I'll support that.
Would you please take roll?
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of appointing a voting delegate to the 2017 Annual Miras Conference. The Municipal Employment Retirement System of Michigan, or MIRAS, is holding their 2017 Annual Conference on September 21 through 22, 2017. The city must appoint a delegate to vote in the city's behalf at the business meeting. Finance Director Ed Bradford will be attending the conference and could be appointed as the voting delegate. At this time, council could take action to appoint Finance Director Ed Bradford as the voting delegate for the city of Manistee at the 2017 Annual Miras Conference.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, and a second by Councilmember Beeden. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Would you please take role?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
And Councilmember Pannia?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the Midwest Gas and Brass Event. The Midwest Gas and Brass is a touring group of antique automobiles pre-1913. The group would like to park their cars on River Street by the water fountain for the public to view. They will have 15 to 20 cars and arrive on Wednesday, August 2, 2017, at 10:30 a.m. and will leave at 2 p.m. At this time, council could take action to authorize Midwest Gas and Brass Event scheduled for August 2, 2017, subject to appropriate department approvals.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed and a second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion? Would you please take role?
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yeah.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
And Councilmember Pannia?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the DDA TGIF Manistee Event. The Manistee Downtown Development Authority is requesting permission to hold a new event, the TGIF Manistee. The first event will be held on Friday, August 11, 2017, from 5 p.m. to 8 p.m. and will take place on River Street from Division to Green Bush Street and from Pine Street to Prue Street. At this time, council could take action to authorize the first TGIF Manistee Event on Friday, August 11, 2017, in downtown Manistee, subject to appropriate department approvals.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed and a second by Councilmember Whitlam. Is there any discussion?
I just think it's a good event for the downtown. My hat's off to Tyler and the DDA for bringing this to bring people downtown Manistee. Good job.
I would agree with that. I'd just like to see the whole street involved. So hopefully it'll take off and become a bigger event.
As the DDA director indicated, it's kind of a first try and there'll be some kinks and little bumps in the road and get those worked out. I think it's a good try, a good thing.
Any other comments? Would you please take role?
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannia?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of a second DDA TGIF Manistee Event. The Manistee Downtown Development Authority is requesting permission to hold a second installment of their new event, TGIF Manistee. The second event will be held on Friday, August 18, 2017, from 5 p.m. to 8 p.m. and will take place on River Street from Division Street to Maple Street and from Maple Street to Oak Street. At this time, council could take action to authorize the second TGIF Manistee Event on Friday, August 18, 2017, in downtown Manistee, subject to appropriate department approvals.
You know what, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed and a second by Councilmember Pannia. Is there any discussion? Would you please take role?
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannia?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We'll move to notification regarding next work session before we get to other items. A council work session has been scheduled for Tuesday, August 8, 2017, at 7 p.m. A discussion will be conducted on a recycling center, traffic speeds on First Street, ways to address streets faster, and such businesses may come before the council.
I would like to add another topic, and that would be to go over our blight procedure and ordinance that we have. I think it's timely. I'm getting several complaints from my side of town about blight issues. And what can they do about them?
I'll make a motion that we approve the notification regarding next work session within the amendment of blight issues.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, a second by Councilmember Whitlam. Is there any further discussion? Would you please take role?
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannia?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Announcements. A report from the Engineer of Record in Utilities Department. Regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Mr. Sean Middleton reports on the activities of the Engineer of Record and responds to any question the council may have regarding their activities.
Good evening, council members. Sean Middleton with Spicer Group reside at 558 First Street, Manistee, Michigan. So tonight, I'm here for Engineer of Record, our annual report. I do want to, I've talked with that as well. We have a corrective action program that we're working under. I'm also going to bring a little bit of that into this because we're trying to update council roughly on a quarterly basis. So kind of killing two birds with one stone. So I'll have a couple of slides related to the corrective action program as well. That's currently your NPDS permit requires. Just our office here in Manistee is growing. We have added some space next to us. We have been doing some upgrades. And so we've been very happy in moving forward and getting to kind of modern facilities, I guess I could say, in terms of new conference room, new front area, and a little more space to bring in. We have seven employees that are working at different levels now currently in the Manistee office for Spicer Group, and some part-time, some co-ops, and several of us working full-time. And so again, we're also happy to see growth. And I just want to take a quick moment just to thank the city and staff and council for the opportunity to work here because it has provided us an opportunity to grow our business in the community. We've done a lot in the last year, and I'm going to kind of very quickly just go through and hit highlights. And there's photos and some different things. But anytime you have a question, you can stop me or if you just want to reserve it to the end of the presentation, we can talk about it. But I'm, again, just going to hit highlights because a lot of things have happened over the last year and moving forward. So I won't read through the, first, I'm going to start with wastewater, some of the projects we've been involved with. Probably most familiar to everybody over the last year, we've been working on the Riverbank Sewer Project and Sixth Avenue Pump Station. I chose this photo here. It's hard to see, but that top photo, you can see the old gravity sewer that was along the banks of the river. And it's exposed to the elements. It was definitely, wasn't on grade, a lot of problems with that pipe. That now you can see in the lower photo, we've put the seawall in and closed it. Now we have a new pipe behind that wall to move wastewater to the pump station. Couple more photos of that project from last year. Upper left is the pump station, upper right is the equipment we use for drilling underneath the river. We had a 900-foot force main that we drilled underneath the river that came out of Spruce Street, if you recall. Lower left is just the photo of the contractor installing the gravity sewer. Lower right is the pump station during construction. So that's the actual Sixth Avenue pump station looking into. Another project that was going on this year, it's the last project that we have on the bond from 2015, is the return activated sludge. Rick may talk more about it, so I'll just hit on it that that project is nearing completion. Asset management, we've talked about it for years, but we are actually getting near the end as far as the saw goes with inventory and condition assessment. So we're moving out of that inventorying and assessing and starting to move into the application of that data with analysis, asset management, capital improvement, projects, et cetera. So as we move into this fall and into next year, we'll actually be utilizing the data, not simply collecting it. With regards to collecting data, in the last year, we've, there's about 3,000 sanitary and storm manhole structures. We've located inventory. Out of those, there's 1,500 manholes, plus or minus, that we've looked inside and we've assessed the condition of. On the side of the pipes in the sanitary sewer system, it's amazing how long it takes. But last year, we spent 12, we did 12 miles of sanitary sewer cleaning and televising. This year, we've done about 11 miles of cleaning and televising. And that takes us to the end of the saw grant budget for wastewater televising. There's still 18 miles remaining in the city system that we're going to look at televising as part of rural development Phase 1 application that we'll be submitting. The contractors now are switching over to televising storm sewer. They're literally starting this week that they'll be cleaning and televising storm sewer. There's about six miles of that, maybe a little more, depends on how much cleaning is required as part of that. A lot of the pipe isn't eligible for storm sewer because it's newer. A lot of the separation projects install new storm sewers, so it doesn't need the televising. And these are just photos, these are Manistee photos of some typical pipes, cracks, and roots intrusion in the system, and even a good one in the upper right there. Hard to see this drawing, but basically in green is showing everything that's been televised so far, and the black lines represent what has yet to be televised or needs to be. About five miles of that pipe is forced main, so that will not be televised. So there's about 18 miles, as I mentioned earlier, left to do. As far as the ratings go, on the sanitary side, the storm or the sanitary manholes, about a third, about two-thirds of those manholes are rated out, we consider to be good. The other third are kind of a combination of fair and poor. So just to give you a little sense, broad view of the condition of the system, and we'll do a lot of mapping in terms of color coding, that, things we could use as we go down. But big picture, that's kind of what our first assessment is structurally of the manholes. That's their condition in terms of how they'll hold up over time. And most of the system is well over 80 years, 80 to 110 years old. Majority of the system, manholes and sanitary sewer. On the sewer side, we've only, this particular, at this point, we haven't received the data from plumbers for this year's televising. We just have last year's. But out of that data, a little over half is in good condition, the pipes this I'm talking about now. And the other half, or a little less than half, is either in the fair to poor. So, and that, I don't know if that will project out for the rest of the system, but based on what we've done so far. On the storm side, kind of similar to the sanitary manholes, we haven't televised any storm sewer yet. So this on the storm manholes, about two-thirds of that is in good shape, and roughly a third is in that fair to poor category. And the majority of that being in the fair, there's a relatively small percentage in the real bad, poor condition. We've talked about monitoring. We're doing a lot of monitoring over the last three years. We continue to do that. Just a couple of take-home items. The plant, we've got five years of data we've been looking at. 35 to 50% of the flows there, depending on the year and the month, is actually infiltration or inflow. So a third to half of the flows we treat aren't wastewater. CSOs, we've been monitoring since late November of 2014. There's been 21 recorded events. I think Rick may talk a little bit more about them. Those range from .2 to 12.4 million gallons, we've observed. We're very comfortable with these numbers because we have this transducer in and we can very accurately measure not only the amounts, but the duration, peak flows going over the weir. So we're starting to get a good handful of data. That data today, if we were to use it based on MDQ guidelines, and we did not eliminate any further infiltration of INI, if tomorrow I had to put a basin down by the wastewater treatment plant, we estimate that in the 4 to 7 million gallon range. And every time we get a storm event and a CSO, it kind of changes because it's all statistics that we're doing. We're taking this data and we're graphing it out, and it kind of moves up and down depending on the type of storm, any amount of, the size of the CSO. But ultimately, that's what we're, you know, we're marching towards that. Of course, our real goal is to get rid of INI. And we've identified, I think Rick may talk a little about this too, some private facilities that have illicit connections. The ones we know about, there's about 10. If we were to take them offline, we think about .2 to .3 million gallons could be pulled out. And if those were all pulled out for that design storm, you know, that equates to almost a million dollars worth of infrastructure that could be saved just by pulling them offline. So it's really important we continue to find INI over this next year and continue to search for it. I'll skip past this one. This is just, this is just a depiction of the CSO events that have occurred. And then Rick may talk more about that. So switching here to transportation streets, again, I won't read this. We're, as you're well aware, every year we do a five-year tip or Transportation Improvement Program. It's on the agenda for our work session coming up in August. That is a kind of a moving document, and we base it on PESA ratings, utilities. A lot of different parameters go into it, and we use asset management principles to do that work. And it's not in line always with fixing the worst one first. I know that's a very difficult thing we deal with day-to-day. But that's an ongoing document that we work closely with staff on. This is just a picture of from 2015 to 2022, so it includes some past projects as well as projecting out to 2022 where we're going to be doing work. And again, this changes all the time, but you know, we added a significant amount of streets to the microservice projects because we got good bids. There's some work we did with Reith Riley that came in good. We're going to add a street. So it's always dynamic, but at least gives you a little sense of the footprint. What you can't see very well on here is there's some utility projects that are shown. And now we need to start coordinating with those. And in addition to that, some of these white spaces you see, you can almost associate them with past separation projects, so you can kind of see why there's holes there. But at least it gives you kind of overview of what the tip looks like on a map. So some projects last year that we've done last year, Reith Riley Mill and Phil Project was done last year. These are the locations, just some photos of that project as it went on last year. Microsurface, of course, that happened this spring. We did about six-plus miles of microsurface work, and we striped all the major streets. Again, it's just some photos of that work. Of course, this is a preventive maintenance technique. It's not a full restoration or heavy rehab. It's considered a light rehabilitation and intended just to extend the life of the pavement that's underneath it by protecting it from the sun and water. 12th Street, another project actively under construction. I don't know if anybody's driven by there lately, but the photos in the left, upper left is before. The middle one was just a rendering that was done, and lower left is a current picture that was taken, I think, yesterday of the road work. So the curb and gutter is in, the stone is in, and they're looking at paving on Friday, I believe. And if it goes well, maybe they're done on Friday, could be Friday, Saturday, or possibly into Monday. But we're close to doing paving on the project. The picture on the right is looking back to the west and then up the curb line on the lower right. Some other projects, just to hit on real quickly, we did a project that was kind of snuck in real quick. We had to get a DEQ permit with a very quick turnaround so we could get some water extension back into Edgewater prior to them doing their parking lot improvements. That was done earlier this year. Water asset management, similar to the saw for storm and sanitary. We don't have a funding source, so we're doing kind of year-to-year building an asset management system for the water system. And so we've, we're in the first stages of that inventorying valves and hydrants. And the next stage is we'll work towards getting that all mapped out and then working with Bruce to figure out how he can utilize that, whether it's valve training programs or hydrant flushing, et cetera. But there's a lot of, you know, there's over 600, well, 600 valves and 400-plus hydrants out there. I'm sure Bruce may talk more about that. out there, I'm sure Bruce may talk more about that. Different project the city was working with the developer on next to the Edgewater Development, Short Street Retaining Wall, that project was also built, you know, in the last year. Again, just some photos upper left prior to the wall being installed, you can see the embankment and an excavator kind of fighting its way up the hill or trying to stay on the hill. And then lower left, actual, the work completed, so you can see the wall from the other side of the river. So future priorities, it's a little bit of, I'd say, a little broken record from last year, I think they're very similar, probably even the year before, we're focusing on streets, still very important in our, as a priority to us, looking at maximizing the dollars that the city is allocating to the system. We're also looking at this whole condition assessment and inventorying, asset management, not just, not just the sewer and the storm sewer, but the streets as well as the water system and any other thing maybe in the future that we bring into it, but try and get to a comprehensive point where we completely inventory and know the condition of and actually can plan very strategically moving forward on road or sewer projects, so things are happening in unison. And then finally, the most important, you know, driven by the DEQ and your NPDS permit is looking at eliminating CSO 18 through the corrective action plan that's required by the NPQ. And that'll be happening over the course of the next year, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that now. I guess one other slide, just, just related to those priorities, I'm not going to go through these, but just some of the projects I know that are probably on our plate that we've been talking to staff about, some small, some large, very large, and those are some of the things we will be working on in the near future and into probably early next So switching to the second part of my presentation, the cap, I'm just, I've got just a handful of slides here, I'll hit on real quick just to give you an update. The NPDS permit, everybody's familiar with it, was issued, the only thing I will note here is that the corrective action plan is part of that permit and is required. The actual corrective action plan is laid out in there, and I'll just mention two key dates that are important probably from an engineering standpoint is by July 1st of next year, we have to complete our basis of design. And what that really means is we need to tell the DEQ exactly what we're going to build, at least pretty, you know, to what level, what size of a storage facility, what other projects might be involved, and lay it out, and that's submitted to the DEQ in June, and by July 1st, that needs to be basically accepted or worked through in that, that time period. So that's a key date, and a lot has to go into getting there. And then the next key date is in 2021, in October, November, we have to have construction completed on that basis of design project. So again, a very short turnaround to get something identified, get it designed, get it permitted, and get it built. Those are, that is in your current NPDS permit. All those lines on the right, I think you've been given copies of this before, but that's a very detailed task outline of the actual steps we'll be going through for the corrective action plan. And I certainly wouldn't go through that tonight. Since last, the last time we did an update to council, two major kind of big picture things, the NPDS permit, the wet weather corrective action plan was actually formally approved in May by the DEQ. We submitted it in January, if you recall, we actually got official letter in May, and that's, then there's some other administrative things we've been doing with the DEQ permit or with the NPDS permit, and that's using My Waters and getting some things posted. Probably more importantly, in the funding side, we're, we're pursuing this Phase One Rural Development permit application. And since the last time we met, well, we met with Rural Development, we published a notice of intent in the paper to submit that application. We met, we came before council last, I guess it was last week or two weeks ago, received approval to submit the application, and now we're in the process of preparing that document for submittal. Ideally, the end of this month is when I would like to have it in, and that's what we're working towards on, on the application. I have just a couple slides left, there's three kind of legs that are moving, it's very complicated, there's three things happening while this, to get this cap done. The first one is a SAW grant, very familiar with that, we're leveraging on the data from that to do some cap work, and I won't spend any more time on that. The second part of that is the actual cap itself that's outlined in the NPDS permit. There's a lot of things we have to do that go beyond the SAW, and those will be happening in Phase One, like I mentioned, for study and design through June of next year, and then Phase Two of the cap will be design permitting. Probably the most important piece of this is how do we fund that work and that design and that construction? And again, we're going to submit two applications to Rural Development. The first application actually has two parts to it in and of itself. The first one is the study investigations, televising, the data collection and analysis and modeling. And the second is a much larger component that Rural Development recommended, and that was to actually build a physical project. And because we have a lot of data collected, our discussion is that we will identify a rehabilitation project that will rehabilitate manholes and sewers that we know are in that poor category, higher, higher successability to INI, and then the two things will happen concurrently. So we'll be doing studying and analysis for the basis of design on a bigger project next year, at the same time, we're going to be designing and doing a project that will happen simultaneously with that work on rehabilitating sewers and manholes. So that was the recommendation of Rural Development that we do that, because just funding a study by itself is not what they do from a bonding standpoint, it's better to have a project involved. So that's kind of, and then we'll move into Phase Two next July of 2018, June, July of 2018, and that will actually be putting an application in for design permitting and construction of the final project to eliminate CSO 18. So I went over a lot there, I wanted to go through it quickly because I know you have a lot of presentations tonight, so, any questions?
I have a couple. This is, this is a naive question, I almost, I'm embarrassed to ask it, but I'm just really curious. When you talk about televising the lines, does somebody actually sit in front of a, a monitor and look at a bunch of televised video basically? And how long does six miles take to review? I need to be able to put that.
Perspective. So yes, to answer your question, and I'll offer to you, they're out there working right now, and you can hop up into their trailer and watch what they do, they'd be happy to have you onboard, I could arrange if you, to see it, because it actually is kind of impressive, I mean, he, it looks like he's sitting at a small little space shuttle station, he's got a lot of things in front of the computers, and, but yes, they monitor it as they go, then we get the data, and they do a lot of things for us, take pictures of defects and they catalog where they are so we can map them out. But ultimately, we, we have to turn around and go through the data, and we can go through it quicker than it takes them to do it, but it still takes time to march through all that sewer video and data.
Yeah, I probably would like to try.
Yeah, just give me a call, we can.
Okay. The second thing is you, you need to do almost, I'm thinking of, thinking of it as a prototype project, project. Are you going to do anything on the north side as a project?
I think what probably we, for this first application, we need to scope the work, and so we're looking at District 6 and 7, which wouldn't be the north side.
No.
However, I think based on what we're seeing for condition and different things, I, I think we may extend out of that area, because we may not have enough candidates for the work we're going to be doing. We want to get the worst ones first and kind of strategically work our way down towards, you know, better and better pipes. So we may end up hopping over to the north side, and, because that's our, it's kind of ranks, there's an area that ranks third or fourth on our list for INI, so it would be good candidates to hop on the north side. Again, this is all work that's done either in a manhole, it's all done below grade, you're going to see a lot of trucks and things above, but we're not going to be tearing up a lot of roads. There'll be spot repairs and different things we do, but this isn't ripping up miles of sewer, it's all done underground.
Okay.
Have you found any significant inflow areas or?
Well, we're, we're kind of at the cusp of looking at that ourselves very hard. Now, we, we thought we found one, it turned out to be kind of a false alarm on Poplar Street, where we thought there's some catch basins tied in, I think it actually isn't. Right now, the ones we've found have been actually at the private level where we know there's connections from private landowners, and there's, and Rick will talk more about it, but those have been identified and we're trying to eliminate them, and, and we, it's like getting credit. Every time we take one of those off, I'm going to go to the DEQ and say, we removed this connection and it's worth so many, you know, thousand gallons or hundreds of thousands of gallons.
You're talking like from the roof drains?
Roof drains, parking lots. We have come across some, you know, we know there's some that are connected in, and we've identified them, we'll put them on a list. We've identified sanitary manholes that have just vented covers where they're in low areas that can actually take water, so the city's gone through and replaced them with solid covers and things like that. It seems that the trend is with the CSOs that we may have more than we had last year in terms of numbers for 2017, but they're smaller. So we're kind of crossing our fingers. The lake levels have been going up, CSOs are trending down, the rainfall has been, has been up, and the, and the, and the, we're not seeing that same trend up on the CSO, so it's a good indicator that we're finding some things and taking care of them, but it's, as we run out of time, you know, that's going to be our biggest issue, as we get into next year, we're, can only eliminate so much before we have to go to the DEQ and say, here's our plan. So, it's a race.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Senator. At this time, Mr. Rick Moore will report on activities of the Utility Department and respond to any questions council may have regarding their activities.
Hi, I'm Bruce Banks, I'm the lead operator for the Water Department of the City of Manistee. We've all met at one time or another, but I'm here to give the, the last year's assessment of the Water Department. The staff is the same, Kathy, Sean, James Riley, who's our new guy, and myself. Kathy's, you know, going on 41 years, I think she's only second behind Cindy for the longest tenure at the city now, you know, it's quite an accomplishment. I'm going to go over what we do real fast. We pump water, last year we pumped 325 million gallons. You see, it's a down then up and downtrend, that's mostly to, you can relate that to the heat of the summer. That's, that's your biggest one, it was, most of that 40 million gallons you see between 14 and 16 is irrigation. So the water is basically the same in the household. We read over 4,200 water meters, and most of that's in our roaming collector, which is in our truck. It's constantly, as soon as we start the truck up, that turns on, it's constantly collecting reads as we drive by them. We maintain and flush over 350 hydrants in our distribution system, and this hydrant, this picture right here, the dual pictures are from this morning, Park Avenue just off of Maywood, that hydrant was hit by a truck, and the new hydrant finally came in, and that's us excavating it out this morning. And I know that's not too good because there's a lot of mist coming my way there, but the new hydrant's installed, and I'm flushing it right there. The old hydrant was a 64 Traverse City, and the new one's, of course, a 17. A 1964 is basically still, a fire hydrant being put in today is going to last 75 to 100 years. So the 64 wasn't by no means, you know, old, it still had a lot of life in it, but when he hit it, he bent the shaft, and there's no repairing that. We have an active valve exercising program, I know Sean said a number of valves, we have over, just under 2,000 valves in the system, including valves on all our hydrants and along the mains and everything, and it's, it's, it's a lot of valves to turn, believe me. Along with those, we have to exercise the interconnect valves to Filer City, we're connected to the Filer City Water System in two spots. Those have to be exercised on a yearly basis. And we worked with, we worked with the representative from Filer City together, and we do it at the same time, so it's not done, you know, on either side. On a daily basis, we do service calls, we go through all those, those can be done every day and, you know, and get pretty busy, there's only, so there's only three of us, so one guy's doing that, the other two guys are constantly doing a water line or a fire hydrant, valve turning, it's, it's non-stop action. Of course, we maintain over 53 miles of water main, and in 2016, we only had five main breaks, which is very, very low. Usually, if I go back in the trending, you usually average about one a month, so, lucky with that. That is a picture of a main break. If, if you've never seen one, I do, you know, encourage you to come watch us work on one, you know, I know as soon as it happens, it gets on the city Facebook page, so. On a daily basis, we perform routine laboratory analysis to ensure the water quality, basically we're checking for chlorine residuals, you've got to have a residual of chlorine out there to ensure there's no bacteria. We do that every day. We also have a active cross-connection program where myself or one of the other guys, we go in and we, we're constantly checking into businesses, make sure there isn't any illegal connections or they do have a backflow preventer installed. We do have the, the City of Manistee Annual Water Quality Report, it's right here, I know you guys have seen this before, those are at many locations throughout the city, and it's on the Facebook, and you can get it on the city website also. We have an active wellhead protection program, basically that is making the public aware, don't dump oil in the ground. You know, like we used to, when I was a kid, I lived on a dirt road, and, and the neighbors, he's like, well, when it gets dusty, you change the oil in the lawnmower and you go and you dump it in the road, keeps the dust down. Well, that's how, that was, that was the mentality then, which, you know, wasn't saying they were wrong, but today, we're trying to say, don't put it in the storm sewer, don't do that, we're trying to keep the aquifer safe, and we're trying to educate the public to do that, because our next generation needs that aquifer also. Along with that, Rick Moore and I have used this ground flow simulator, that ground flow, it's about this big, I think you guys have seen it before, and it basically shows how groundwater moves throughout the system and the potential uncapped wells, how anything could get down there and, and poison the system, actually. So we try to teach that in the high schools. Some of our completed projects from the past year, the biggest one was the River and Oak Street valve replacement. A water system is like a spider web, you know, everything's all interconnected, you know, every road has a water main on it, basically. There's only two water mains going underneath the river feeding the north to the south or vice versa. And one of them is underneath Oak Street going right next to the Sixth Avenue Pump Station. In this intersection, two of the valves going east and west were broken, one of them in the off position, the other one in the 90% off position. It created a severe hazard for fire flow if we had a downtown district fire. So we've been trying to get this done, we finally nailed it, knocked it out, the road looks good because they just resurfacing right after that, and I got a new hydrant, I talked, Jeff let me put a new hydrant in that intersection. The old one was a 1934, it was still operating, but while we had that opened up, we figured we'd do it right then. It's only $1,600 for new hydrant. This is a 12-inch broken valve that we took out, that literally is, it's the size of a Volkswagen, basically, you know, it'd take five guys just to move that, it's just a massive piece of iron. Another project that we just finished with was the plug-in of Well 7. We had a vision of putting this, rehabbing this well and putting it back in line, along with our other three active wells by the high school, you can see this just south of the high school, right next to the track. When we went to get ahold of the contractor, contractor says, we're not, we've got to get to the DEQ, the DEQ says, boy, hold on, I don't like that idea, that's the inside of Well 7, all the piping was there, and the DEQ is slowly enforcing us to start looking for a new well field. So in the end, on the bottom right corner of that picture, that is the capped 16-inch well right there, and that will never pump water again, unfortunately. We did pass the one-year inspection on our Maywood Water Tower painting, remember that was two years ago, we had that, passed the one-year inspection, everything's going good, flying colors, should have 15 years left on that. We renovated the water lab this year, the old one on, luckily you've never seen it, it was really, really bad shape, it was 30 years, I think it was as old as the DPW building. But Mark Hanson did all the construction work here, put the counters in, put the countertop in, I think he did a really fine job. It's, it looks nice now, you know, for something that we do every day, we work there. We installed a new DPW standpipe area, it was by the garage driveway. The new one, we were looking for something that we could use more year-round if need be, so we put it inside the Duffy Park restroom, we got all the inside plumbing, we can heat that with a small space heater, and then we got the valving to turn off and drain it come winter time, and then if we need to use it, like say in January, we can fire it up, and then turn it off and drain it again. But you can hook up fire hoses if... Uh, but you can hook up fire hoses with it and then you can wash out salt trucks and all the other good stuff they use it for. Another thing we did, we did a well eight rehab where you pull that motor off, uh, and then you pull all the column and all the shaft out. And then what you got down there is your screen, just like a house well, you know, in a rural community. And we, uh, dump a bunch of chemical down there, brush it clean, put everything back together. You pump it to waste a bunch of times. Uh, you test the water, you send it out for DEQ testing. Once that's, uh, all passes, then the well's good for another, hopefully, five to seven years before it has to happen again. Um, the final thing I want to talk about is Fourteenth and Maple Street at, at Maple and Twelfth, right now where the road construction is. Uh, going south to the cemetery, we have a six-inch water main that goes into Filer City, Filer Township. Uh, off that six-inch water main, we're feeding eight houses and a fire hydrant. Uh, for years, ever since I started here, uh, the water lines are constantly popping. I'm sure if, anybody who travels there, I know, I know Mark does all the time. Uh, you've seen us there. The road's always boogered it up like it is right now. And, uh, you see flashing lights there in the middle of the night. Anyways, come to find out, DTE has a, a, a gas main that runs through there that's rectified. That rectified gas main was using every one of our service lines that's going laterally off the, the water main as a grounding rod. So it was, we'd put a new copper line in. Six months later, that copper line's blowing water. It's like, "What the heck's going on here?" Well, that's what's going on. So it ate every one of our lines up multiple times to each one of those houses. Uh, this past spring, DTE came in, installed grounding rods up and down that hill to hopefully that doesn't happen to any of our lines again. Um, but tomorrow, we have a meeting with the damage and claims department from DTE, to hopefully get some of this money back from us or maybe start discussion of that because we've, I said ten thousand, it's, it's upwards of over thirty thousand dollars we've spent just, uh, overtime and, and, and pipe, new pipe, uh, and asphalt and, you know, everything else that goes along with that. But hopefully that gets, gets done tomorrow. We'll see. Is there any questions? I know that was quick. I was on a real strict time. You should see the email I got.
She has a good hand?
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I'm timing you. Cause I know you're gonna time me when I start. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Council. Good to see ya. Been a year since I've been here to give you a report. And I'm gonna give another annual report on the activities at the wastewater treatment plant. And, um, we have a lot going on. And so it's gonna take a little bit to do this. We'll just go right through it. Here's an aerial photo of the wastewater treatment plant. You know, it's the largest asset that the city really owns. And, uh, it wouldn't cost less than twenty million, well over twenty million to replace that if we needed to. So it's quite an asset that we have the responsibility to take care of and maintain. And, um, we treat a lot of water. And I took a picture of this just yesterday. This on the left is our influent, what it looks like. The eff, the effluent is on our right side. So you can see that, you know, it, the treatment plant does really quite a good job and we're proud of the effluent that we put out. Last year, we treated three hundred and seventy-one million gallons, uh, of wastewater and that equaled one million sixteen thousand gallons every day of wastewater going through the treatment plant. The treatment plant's got a capacity of one point three million gallons. So that means that we used about seventy-eight percent of the plant's capacity. But you know, it also means that we have twenty-two percent of the capacity still left for future growth. And as was already discussed tonight about getting I N I L and illicit connections, the more we can get out, that seventy-eight percent's gonna go down and the available capacity's gonna go up. So it benefits the city all the way around. Last year, well, you can see here, this is a five-year, you know, graph of, uh, the last five years of treatment of, uh, you can see in the middle, uh, two thousand and fourteen, uh, we, we ran four hundred and twenty-three million gallons through the plant. That's a lot of water, but you know, that's also the year that we had. I think there were over two hundred inches of snow. And then we had lengthy times of run water advisories to prevent, uh, freezing pipes in the homes. And so that added to that considerably. The treatment plant is staffed seven days a week, uh, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We operate and we maintain, you know, fourteen lift stations throughout the collection system. We operate and maintain the following processes, which include the influent area and our grit and bar rake and so forth. We operate the primary treatment sludge pumping. Activate sludge really is the heart of the process, the biological process. Uh, we operate the UV disinfection, sludge digestion, gas production, and so forth. We also maintain the grounds and the facilities, um, and the maintenance of those, as well as the lift stations or most of the lift stations. So, you know, we operate and maintain about sixty pumps and five blowers, uh, that are in service throughout the collection system and the wastewater treatment plant. So there's a lot there that we maintain. And in order to do that, you know, we need a good qualified staff. And we have Randy Huns, who's been with us for twenty-four years, got a D license. Jake Zabanski, he's been with us twenty months, but he has decided to move to the DPW. So within the next couple of weeks, he's gonna do that. We just completed interviews to replace him. Last week, we have a good candidate. We're gonna bring him on in hopefully about two weeks. Uh, but I'll mention Gabe Walker. He's been with us now fifteen months and just two months ago, he wrote his decertification and he passed. And I'm proud of him for doing that. You know, uh, he needs, congratulations. Uh, he's got his D license now. He passed with a ninety percent. And that's really unusual for anyone writing their first license especially. You know, ninety percent's very good. You need seventy to pass, but he did that and, uh, good for him. So we have a totally combined experience down there for about seventy years. Uh, one of the most labor-intensive portions of the plant is the laboratory. And we have, uh, a lot of tests that we perform down there. Eight tests are actually mandated in our NPDS permit. There's many more tests we do. There are, you know, tests that we do for process control. But all these tests that, uh, are mandated, you know, we have revised them in the last year or so to meet standard methods that are set by EPA. Um, we've also, uh, written SOPs or standard operating procedures for each of the tests. And by doing that, it ensures consistency with the staff that each one is doing the same procedures correctly. And, uh, a couple of years ago, before I came on, there was one individual that did all the lab work all the time. And so now, we've changed that to where each operator is cross-trained. They can operate the lab as well as they can out in the plant. And that does, that really works well for us. And, uh, so the, um, the SOPs are really important, especially hiring new people soon and then in the future. That'll really help them to get on board, to be consistent with all the testing that's going on as well. Lab tests that we do includes a BOD. This is pictured here. Uh, total and volatile suspended solids, uh, as well as ammonia nitrogen. Here pictured is the phosphorus test. We do the phosphorus fecal coliforms, well as E. coli bacteria. We do pH and we do, we do dissolved oxygen as well. And with the lab, you know, we need to ensure that the data come out of our laboratories after. So we have a lab QA QC program. And the purpose of that program is really to ensure that what we're producing is accurate and to the best of what we can produce. Uh, additional tests, as I mentioned, we do a lot of things, uh, volatile acids and MCRTs, all kinds of tests that we do for process efficiency. They help us maintain and operate the digester, the activate the sludge process, and all these tests are really necessary. So the lab, uh, actually is a, a very labor-intensive area. I have a person in there, you know, um, eight hours a day, five days a week. There's lab work done on the weekends as well. So it's a, a full-time job just working in the laboratory. We do additional testing as well. You know, every time we have a CSO, we have to go out and we sample for E. coli bacteria. And we do that to ensure that the untreated sewage that was discharged, uh, isn't gonna adversely affect the receiving stream. So we sample by the treatment plant at the boat launch. We then go north to, uh, just north of Morton Salt Company. Uh, we sample at Arthur Street Boat Launch, cross the lake over by Penny Park, and then also by First Street Boat Launch as well. So those five locations are sampled every time we have a CSO. And no samples to date have come back where they're out of compliance or where we exceed the health department's, uh, standards. In addition to those tests, we also do beach sampling. And we sample, uh, between Memorial Day and Labor Day. We take, uh, samples from the First Street Beach, Fifth Avenue Beach, and Manmade Lake. And, uh, we, uh, test those areas to be sure that the areas that people are swimming in are safe. And again, no samples have come back that exceed the standards set by health department. I mentioned that we have eight tests that, uh, mandated. We do seven. The last one, mercury, we have in the equipment or the ability to perform the mercury test. So we, uh, we, uh, contract that out to a lab in Kalamazoo. The cheap program goal is one point three nanograms per million, uh, per liter, rather. And a nanogram is parts per trillion. So it's really hard to wrap your mind around what is a trillionth of a part. Uh, but you know, the whole state of Michigan, everybody's permit limit's the same, one point three nanograms. And our average dispasture was one point one three. So we're in real good shape. Uh, we're exceeding that goal and, uh, manatee needs to be commended for those efforts that we have. Uh, O and M manual, you know, we've created a formal maintenance program down at the treatment plant. The plant and all the pump stations have been broken down into weekly segments. So what we do, you know, we have certain things that are looked at, you know, every week, sometimes, uh, every month. At least everything is done on at least an annual basis. But by doing so, we've been able to convert our maintenance efforts in the program from a reactive to a proactive system. So instead of just waiting for something to break down and go fix it, we really know what's going on with all the equipment in the plant. And as something starts to wear, break down, we get ahead of the game before it really becomes catastrophes, catastrophe. So, uh, that, the maintenance program is working really quite well for us. Land application, of course, all the slugs that are produced in the plant, we have to get rid of somehow. And we, uh, contract with a company that comes in and they take it all out and they, uh, land apply it for us. Uh, last year, we land applied one million four hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred gallons of biosolids and that went over eighty-one acres owned by a farmer. And, uh, the material's really good as a nutrient value. It's a good soil conditioner. It's great stuff. And, uh, they have, you can see the, the nutrient value is tremendous for them. They get a hundred and thirty-three pounds of nitrogen at least. That's what they got last year. And a hundred and eighty-eight pounds of phosphorus for every acre that we applied on. Well, we did a lot of projects last, uh, last year as well. And this is one that I probably liked the best because we had one large room down there that, uh, was twenty-four feet by twelve feet wide. And, uh, I shared an office with the, the lunchroom, more or less, and it was kind of inconvenient many times. So we split that room right down the center and, uh, I have an office. And then we have a nice lunchroom now for the guys. Before, they would, you know, take a break or do their lunch and then go into the laboratory and wash their dishes in the sink. They just did back easel. They did sludge and that kind of thing, unsanitary. So we have a nice setup in the la, in the lunchroom and it's nice, uh, for everybody. So I really appreciate being able to do that. Sixth Avenue Pump Station was mentioned already, but that's just a great station that's, is doing a fantastic job. Most important, well, not most important, but interesting thing with that project for me was to see them directional drill under the river and come up right where they needed to. And so that overall project was about two million dollars or, or somewhere in that area, but it was a, a great project, working excellent for us. The phone line conversion was really quite interesting as well. We converted, uh, our, our phone lines for lift stations from land-based to cellular. We had fourteen pump stations. We have fourteen stations and eleven of them had land-based phone lines. And they were costing about seventy-eight dollars per line, per month. Cost to convert over to cellular was two thousand dollars per line or twenty-two thousand dollars. Well, the cost per line went from seventy-eight dollars down to twenty dollars per line, per month. Savings of seventy-six hundred and fifty-six dollars per year. So we got a payback on this, uh, project here about two point eight years. And after that, we're free and clear. So it was a good investment for us to do. The RAS pumps have already been mentioned. We have three pumps that are, uh, being replaced. One on the left is still the old pump that, uh, we still have in place. The, uh, on the right are, we have two of them like that. They're nice. Uh, they're working great, but we're waiting on that third one to, uh, be finished. Then we will continue with painting the room of the pipes and everything to make it look decent. I'll have a picture of that for you next year. Uh, painting projects, as I mentioned last year, and I took a lot of jabs for it, but we're gonna paint, paint, paint. And we've done so. We're gonna continue to paint, paint, paint. Um, but, uh, the painting projects included our hallways. We did our laboratory. We did our boiler room, uh, electrical room, storage room. And then we had this pipe gallery that was really a mess. And today, you know, it looks like this, much better painted. We still may do something with the floor, but at least, uh, it's looking real good. Uh, upcoming projects for this year budget that we have seventeen eighteen include, uh, painting this digester cover. That cover's a sixty-foot cover. We budgeted eighty-five thousand dollars, uh, for this work in the spring. And they need to paint not only the outside, but they, once we clean the tank, I'll get it pumped out, they're gonna sandblast and paint the underside completely. So that's why it's gonna cost a lot and take quite a while to do that. Uh, this sludge pump is really, um, exceeding its life, giving us a lot of trouble, makes messes terrible. So we have budgeted monies to replace this pump this year. This'll be an interesting project here. We have two blowers. These are seventy-five horsepower motors. And, uh, they run a hundred percent, you know, full speed when they're running. But we just throttle down the discharge valve to control the air. Well, that's really inefficient. That motor's still running at a hundred percent. So we're gonna use this VFD, that's a variable frequency drive. And we're gonna control that speed of that motor along with a couple of D O probes, dissolved oxygen probes in the tank. And they will ramp that motor speed down with that valve open a hundred percent. And it's about twelve hundred and fifty dollars to make this conversion, but we'll get a payback in less than a year on this because of, uh, because we're gonna do this. And then we're gonna do, uh, another project is the floor replacement in the lab. It's just beyond its life. It's really bad. That needs to be worked on. Then we'll probably do some work on the cabinets as well. They're really in pretty rough shape. They need some, uh, refinishing. Then in the budget this year also, we have two lift stations, pump stations that, uh, are on the docket. The left is Arthur Street and that's gonna need a, a generator and some other work added to it. On the right is Jocelyn Co. that, uh, needs, uh, some work done to that station as well. Then again, gonna continue painting, uh, throughout the plant. Long-range projects, uh, retention basin, and that's already been talked about, you know, by Sean. But that, uh, basin is gonna need to go in, uh, to capture the, the flows. And then, uh, another, um, project in the future, the CIP, is the bar rake. You know, most equipment in treatment plants has a life of thirty to forty years at the max. And this bar screen is running about thirty-nine years now. We put some, quite a bit of labor and work into it this last year, but it's really beyond its life. And, uh, we need to look at replacing that. I, I mentioned that as a commercial, that is coming. And, uh, this project most likely will be in the quarter million dollar range, two hundred and fifty thousand. It's very expensive. Nothing else. Treatment plant's cheap. You know, everything is very expensive. NPDS permit. Um, of course, our new pit permit went into effect January first this year. And, uh, Sean already touched on, uh, the weather corrective action plan. So I won't, uh, really need to go into that. But, uh, the permit actually reads that that CSO needs to be eliminated and any discharges are prohibited after February first, two thousand and twenty-one. So, you know, that's a tight schedule. When you think about it, that's three and a half years. And that's gonna, we're gonna be at crunch time to get that in, in time with the work that still needs to be done. Then design, construction, bidding, all that that goes with it. It's gonna be a tight schedule. And then assets management is also into permit and Sean already touched on that a bit. So let's talk a little bit about the CSO. Last year, um, you know, we had four overflows. And, um, that's a fifty-five percent decrease in what we had in two thousand and fifteen. But we still discharged seventeen point seven-four million gallons. That's a lot of water to discharge. Keeping in mind that the number of events really is dependent upon snow and rain and precipitation that we receive. This year, we've already had seven overflows. And, uh, so we, you know, the weather, the rain and that has really been on quite a bit. But we noticed with this last one, we had just last week, it was only three hundred and seventy thousand gallon overflow. And so if we look at that compared to the rain amounts that have come down in the past ones, we can see that, uh, getting the illicit connections, uh, out and, uh, I think some other things that have happened, we're starting to, to gain on the amount of water that's really discharged. But still, we have a discharge. It has gotta be eliminated. Assets management plan's already been, uh, discussed. And, you know, we need to take inventory of the entire wastewater system, determine the useful life of everything that we have. And then really do a calculation of replacement cost and put that into a CIP down the road when things gonna be worked on. And then, uh, fund it. Fund is gonna be a big thing. Illicit connections. You know, back in fourteen or before, they did, uh, smoke testing. Illicit connections, you know, back in 14 or before, they did smoke testing, they did dye testing, and they found lots of illicit connections throughout the town. And most of those were all corrected, but there were 10 of them that were still on the books. And in April, we sent out letters that had some meat in, into the language. And we informed the property owners that they have an illicit connection on their property and they need to take care of it within 90 days. And so today, to this date, we have had eight positive responses that the connection's either been corrected or it's in the process of being corrected. So that's an 80% success rate. That's real good. But the next step is going to be enforcement for the ordinance violations and which will include fines. And the two that did not respond, you know, we sent out these letters, we sent them certified mail, we got word back, signed card back that they received it. But these two, they didn't respond, or they did respond, I'll take they responded, but they haven't taken any action at all. And 321 River Street is an apartment building on the corner of where Division comes down the river, it's on the left side. Then the Mob Bell Building that's on Oak Street, that's the other one. And so I would assume that they'll probably will have enforcement on those two there. Last thing I'll mention is public relations. I am a real strong advocate of public relations. I love to give tours of the treatment plant. And you know, if someone wants information about the treatment plant, but they can't come to us, I have a PowerPoint presentation I'll take to them. And I'll go to an organization or to wherever we need to. And I like doing this type of presentation to inform people, to train and teach people of what's going on in wastewater and in our community. Bruce kind of touched on, you know, the PowerPoint for, or the thing for groundwater management. We have, you know, a program put together to go into the schools and teach the kids about groundwater management, contamination and so forth. And we plan to continue to do that this, this fall, yeah, this fall when school opens. We weren't able to last year because when they needed it, I had hip surgery and I was out of commission for a bit. So we will pick it up this year and do it. But it's a great thing to teach the kids because they get the idea of what happens from start to finish. You pull the water from the ground, it ends up at the wastewater plant. And we teach them what not to do if they live out in the outskirts and they have, you know, groundwater wells and that kind of thing. So education is really important. I really believe in it. And it's important to keep the public informed and what's going on. So with that, I'll take questions if anybody's got one other than that. That's my presentation.
I would encourage, take a tour. I took a tour last fall.
Yes, you did.
It was, it was neat to see how everything is done and...
Has anyone not taken a tour of the treatment?
No, I, I took a tour when I was first elected. So I, I just want to see the talibis.
I put you on notice if you haven't had a tour. We need to have you come down and take a tour of the plant.
I just went north of there when you're eight months pregnant because there's a lot of barriers to go through.
Okay, no questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance will be recognized by the mayor for comment limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be public to read. If you have a comment, please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Terry Janicki. I live at 407 McKee Street. I live right on the corner of Fourth and McKee. Big Lake Greenhouse, you can't miss it. I'm here, I'm concerned about the sidewalk in front of my house. I have a 70-year-old mother that does a lot of stuff outside of the home. The sidewalk has been buckled up by the trees. I did submit a form at the beginning of this year to have the trees removed. A guy came to my house, there was actually two gentlemen, came to my house. He looked at the trees. At this point, he was complaining that he wasn't getting paid for looking at the trees and stuff. I said, but, you know, he says, well, maybe they just need to be trimmed. And then I showed him the sidewalk. He looked at the sidewalk and said, his sidewalk needed to be replaced too. And, and then he left. In the process after that, I have gotten ahold of Karen Goodman. We have been throwing emails back and forth. The June 29th, this has actually started June 9th. I don't know if this is any of, this is relevant, but it made me feel better to actually let you know what actually is going on. June 29th, she involved Thad and Jeff McCula and myself all in an email. We've been emailing back and forth. July 10th, Jeff and I finally got emails back and forth. He had somebody come take a look at the sidewalk. He said he was concerned about the section from McKee Street up from Fifth, all the way up to Fifth Street, that section right there. And then he said that the crews would start this week, which was July 10th, on replacing sidewalks, hopefully completed in the next month. I, I proceeded to tell him on July 10th that he sent me a PDF file with a trim tree removal form. And I proceeded to tell him that I had already filled one out if he wanted to, because I don't have access to a printer, if he would please send me another one, I would be more than happy to fill another one out, have the trees removed. And once the trees are removed, I would put different trees there, you know? I mean, I know you guys don't like to cut all these trees down, but that tree is going to wind up lifting that sidewalk back up again. And people trip and fall in front of my house numerous times. Now, one of my questions is, is who's responsible? I mean, I, really seriously, I mean, I, I would like to know, who's responsible if somebody does, you know what I'm saying, a section of sidewalk and somebody trips and falls and, and really hurts themselves? Who, who's responsible? Is it the homeowner that has that section out in front of them?
That would be the city's responsibility and we would have that person file a claim with us. We would send it to our insurance company.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just concerned from all the people that walk up and down there because I mean, the sidewalk, I mean, I know there's bad sections everywhere, but I'm concerned for the, in front of my house because I have a 70-year-old mother that is very active, you know? And if she trips and falls on that sidewalk, you know, I mean, who's, who's responsible if it does happen?
Just explain if it happens, that you have to come to the city hall and you file out a claim, then it would be processed.
Okay. And I would also like to know, he said that the sidewalks were already being started. I would also like to be informed of when mine's going to be done. Is it going to be done this year?
Yes, as I explained earlier this evening, we've got another similar complaint elsewhere in town that we're starting tomorrow. And then we'll move over to this section and work on this section as soon as that's complete.
Okay, so if I come to the next meeting, you'll have an update of when, when my, when my section should be done?
Should be complete before the next meeting.
Okay, so you'll keep me informed of when you'll be doing my side? And then what am I supposed to do about the trees? Do I fill out another form?
This is, I'm going to explain it for your benefit and the council.
Okay.
So when there's a request to remove a tree or to trim a tree, we collect those applications as, as she explained. We take those applications and usually there's a bunch of them. They go to the tree commission and the representatives from the tree commission go to each of those requested sites and make recommendations on whether to remove a tree or whether to trim it and if, trim it, in what fashion to trim it. That comes back to the public works and then, and then our crews will, if it's an emergent situation or a dangerous situation, will trim, remove, or do whatever at that time. Otherwise, normally late fall and early spring is when we do most of our forestry work. So I've been trying to go back and find out what the response was on that and I don't have that answer yet. But what I can tell you in similar situations, what the representatives from the tree commission have told us is that at some point, the trees are so mature that if we remove the roots and replace the sidewalk that has caused the sidewalk to heave, that the roots will not, will not grow back and continue to, continue to impact that sidewalk any longer. So what we've been doing the last several years is removing enough of the root base to make the concrete repair. And they have not recommended tree removal completely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizen comments?
I didn't expect to be here tonight. I was looking for Terry and here I am. Anyway, Paul Glasser, 253 Fifth Street, Manistee. I'm an avid walker, only four years younger than Terry's mother. The light on First Street and 31, they repaired that lighting over there a year or so ago. If you pay attention to the walk, you can never walk across 31 because it's always red. I'd like to get that corrected. I think the state of Michigan should have taken care of that a year ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional citizen comments? If not, we'll move on to officials and staff. City clerk.
Just wanted to remind anyone running for council that petitions are due next Tuesday by 4:00.
Thank you. City manager.
Public works.
Just one item. Sometime like yesterday or early today, there were some no trespassing signs placed at Manmade Lake. I'm not sure if you're aware, but there's actually two private lots that are on that lake and adjacent to the parking area. The signs are on that piece of property, so they were not installed by the city, but done by the property owner. Public access is still available if you go to the north or to the right or south to the left of that, of where it's posted. But I just wanted to make you aware because we've been receiving a lot of calls today.
Mining concerning?
I don't have anything.
Mayor Proton? Real quick, I just want to thank the EMS people. I had a really bad severe attack of vertigo, probably one of the worst ones I've ever had. And I, my wife threw me down to the fire station and they checked me out real quick. And I was kind of impressed because they, not only did they check me out and make sure I was going to be okay, but he also referred me to a website, which actually worked. It's a quick fix for vertigo. And I looked it up and it's something you can do really quick and it does relieve the spinning real quick. Anyway, I'm just really impressed with the service that I received and I wanted to thank them personally.
Captain McCooper?
On the next work session on August 8th, the recycle center cameras are on that. I'm just wondering if we could get a video to show us the clarity of the cameras, how they work for that presentation?
Certainly can arrange that.
Okay, thank you. That is all.
I would like to thank Mr. Middleton, Mr. Banks, and Mr. Moore. Good presentation, very informative tonight, quite clear and detailed. I'd also like to thank the citizens that are here in attendance tonight for their participation and coming forward. With that, I take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Thank you.